What do we deal with?
Trust and verify. May I ask you any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you allowing me to come in here sort of at a skip and a run. It's not the way we normally do business. Once we get the feasibility period behind us, I think we can relax into a more normal way of doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Okay, next we're gonna have a presentation by Time Warner. I know this has been a very big concern in our community about having good internet service. This would be a start. I hope.
I might have got my one of the government education letter that was sent over to the area. And it's always going to be a referral request actually. We've been considering for the last three years. And then the new work of the plan that I'll probably hand out to the places between the different sites. If you go to the page or the packet that you just received, that will show you where the pricing is on the services that we recommend. Basically, what the intent is to build an infrastructure, dedicated infrastructure via fiber optic solution for the sole use of the city offices. What I might add to the City Hall, Police Department, of course, the Civic Center itself. As the years pass, I understand that in these conversations, the goal's been concerned by reliable internet access for the growth of the city offices and the functionality of the city offices as well. Where the Police Department, where they accommodate one such things as the job fair and do the civic center. That goes for the functionality of the city office, city office as well. And one thing, if you look at the last page also on the packet, if you do a little bit of our network of liability where if our uptime is not there, we actually penalize ourselves as far as the percentage of your ability is to use. So that way we don't have to be up in numbers to provide services to you down at any time. And some of our customers here in the area include HEB, Wilson County, City of Pearsall, Texas Workforce Commission, Forsyth Electric, County Memorial Hospital, and Royal ISD. So is there any pricing in that page? Ask me questions if you want to.
Can you explain the tiers?
I do have a question. How many are available per megabits? I have to ask that with exhausties sometimes. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the present solution that the city may have, it could be less than one megabit is for us internet access. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So therefore, what we're producing, proposing is three different tiers of internet access that one could choose from. Here at the office, it could be ten megabits, it could be twenty megabits, it could be thirty megabits. And that's why I wanted to give you that option of the price structure. So therefore, somebody is just using one megabit, and now we're proposing ten, twenty, or thirty dedicated. It's not shared. So therefore, if the ten, twenty, or thirty megabits is allocated here for this office, it's for the sole use of this office. And then, of course, we're proposing private connectivity to the Police Department and also to the Civic Center. If you choose to have that internet access shared with us. It's an infrastructure that you, that we would build for you at our expense. But in other words, what I'm saying, we're gonna incur the total cost to build the infrastructure to these three off, these three locations of the city. So therefore, you've got three options. Would it be for the internet access, this would be eight hundred fifty dollars per month for ten mags, twenty mags, nine hundred fifty, or for thirty mags of internet access, one thousand and fifty? Now, to have the connectivity to cross the street from the Police Department or to the Civic Center, here again, this would be a fiber optic solution that we build. And then, per month, for that ten mags of point-to-point, there's a difference between two. One's internet access, and then the other one is dispersion of fiber down to those other entities, which is called point-to-point. Ten megabits, which is gonna be for each side, eight fifty every month.
Can you explain on the, with B Street here, why it's twenty-eight fifty, you're tolling each one of those? It's an option?
Actually, it is an option, and the way our system works, it actually, yeah, we've gotta rest it around. But it is an option as far as either a thousand fifty, or the nine fifty, or the eight fifty.
Yes, it's a total of twenty-eight fifty.
You would back the option, so in other words, you'd have a choice of, you know, ten, twenty, or thirty. However, the pricing for the both sides, which is Police Department and Civic Center, that's constant, that's the ten mags for the public access.
Does the library, the county have a Time Warner too, no?
Yes, it does.
But the libraries right across the street, is there any like something booked up or something?
I took care of it. I took it in three years ago. So thanks, I have to find.
No, we're talking about.
But like a break or something to work, if this is right across the street, it wouldn't give us like a break maybe and put us up with kind of advice or?
Because the way it works actually, with the E-Rate funding the libraries, basically, it's not available for them. They connect to any city counties with that library. The library basically is.
But we would partner up with the county or something, we couldn't get it to work.
No, that the county would actually need to fund it for that library. A better funding schedule.
It's the same thing that that was also proposed, there's one town from the school district as well. It's an intense solution which, I'm trying to navigate such a period of time, but it's legit.
The law's very sure you can maximize your profit by doing that.
That'd be something. Same token too, a lot of people want to control the manageability because they don't wanna share something. Because obviously, when everything's internet-based, you have to make sure that it's being used for the coverage of the students.
And a big thing with E-Rate and how it works, and give you an example for the school, you know, they may be paying what the cost is to try and work here, it could be ten thousand dollars. While the government pays up eight percent of that to the school, or pays two thousand, make it feasible for them to have the higher surface for the school, for the teachers, and for the students.
Do a little bit of research too, and I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that right now the income that can't provide solutions, see if it could be wireless or Verizon? Is that correct? Verizon is dealing with incumbent that can provide your wireline solution? Okay. Pretty much. And my understanding is when somebody wants to get a T1, they're gonna only use the acronym T1, which is four and one point five megabits. As opposed to the proposed ten, twenty, or thirty megabits. If Verizon, or somebody's trying to propose buying one point five megabits in the name of eight hundred dollars a month, sometimes then it's pressure based, where am I gonna get on better economies of scale? Because it's only comparable to some of the prone interference, because the T1 is copper-based. As opposed to fiber optic, it's scalable and not prone to interference. Well, here again, whether it's the school district, the electrical utility, or the hospital provider, which is called the one, using fiber optic, it's paid right now for the teacher group.
Is there a five static IPs going directly to here, or it's gonna be to each?
It's down to this location basically. However, they put it on the other side, they need to use it, they can do that one more, put that one up on the ground.
And sometimes, basically, go peer-to-peer?
Correct.
Now, of course, if five is meet, needs to address for more, that's all we can tell you.
Couple of questions. You mentioned future growth. And how could this benefit, you know, the rest of the community, and it's important to have the services here at City Hall, and then Civic Center especially, you know, with meetings and everything there. How could it benefit future growth as far as, you know, the residents and floors?
I think the way it basically worked is you have, you have a wire fiber that's extending out to areas up on that alley now. So if there's any businesses in the line of, they want to get fiber services, the fiber services will be available at lower costs. So that's part of that thing. That's the example where the people who pay for these extensions are basically the benefits of the customers that are around for the fiber services.
So then right now, except the school, would you leave businesses that are affected from them on the end of the school?
Correct. There's businesses around that need fiber, that.
So then they can take advantage of it now?
Correct.
How about residents?
Residents, if they wanna pay the commercial prices, it'll only be the.
So you pay commercial prices and you can get them?
Exactly. But commercial prices, understand, you know, when you look at a ten meg, which is not really a high bandwidth solution, you look at eight hundred fifty dollars a month. Well, most residents can't afford eight hundred fifty dollars a month for a ten-meg connection. So we don't have the lower end, cost-wise, as far as the cost of that.
Can that be available, future growth? I mean, at what point, I mean, can you offer that to the residents? If you acquire so many businesses, I mean, will your table are residential rate versus a commercial rate?
At an affordable rate.
Basically, the price bandwidth continues to drop. That's a given. But the question about going to a residential is gonna be number one, the cost is often evident in its time to take into residence and give them the service at the lower cost.
It's also contingent on a quest cable infrastructure, then that would be delivered to the end user of the home, which is not, this is not the way now. So therefore, from the past four or five years, everything that's been brought to support, this is installed in fiber base.
I think one thing that this does also, that your, all your locations, basically, what it allows you to do is not only have that patch of bandwidth, but you have, you have manpower, versus you have applications that are down, or you can't answer them with internet. The efficiency of it, basically, your employees is another benefit you can wish for with the fiber optic wireless service.
So I'd like to finish a question as far as future growth for residential, that's an other question.
It's not, it's not an other question, at this point, it's not on the table. So we, we don't know.
I had a question, this was asked me years ago. Maybe it's been asked, it's just not in the business model right now, because in other states, that we still have not finished the infrastructure. Obviously, we have finished that infrastructure before you go to another city and make a start.
Can we talk a little bit about our towers? Where, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? If we put antennas on our own towers, then we could have Wi-Fi for anyone that reaches that area. Correct. It wouldn't be with y'all, but we could get it through another provider. Correct. Now, I'm not talking about satellite or anything, I'm just talking about putting little antennas.
So what you're talking about is basically going and making sure we're still on the same page with this. You were talking about hooking up Wi-Fi to certain areas based off the internet bandwidth here. And the one thing, the thing with that is it will take from the bandwidth you currently have, yes, that is an option to do.
But if you go with a higher one, then you have that, take those who are offering something to the citizens, upright towers.
You do, and one good thing about our fiber services, say you decide to go with the thirty-meg connection, what that'll do is we actually form a report, so we're giving you a non-appropriation clause that basically allows you to adjust up and down that we give to our government accounts. And basically, what that'll do is say you go with the thirty today, and you realize, okay, you know what? When you run a report, run a report for the last two weeks, last three months, last six months, what do you wanna do? And see that you go way above that, that'll let you know, okay, you've gone above that. You need to go to the next option for your best. Or if you're going too high, then you can always bring it down as well.
But that would still be based off of these rates that you're given. So technically, to answer his question, we can offer a little something to the citizens.
Based on investment?
Offer our own towers.
Based on the investment of the city to support the infrastructure?
Yes.
But we'll take responsibility, we'll look at the end user, and ask if we have, if one of the antennas goes down. Because our responsibility is to the.
The actual.
Correct. Now, something else worth mentioning too, just because, here's a question that's up. When we do take the fiber optic to the proposed three locations, one gigabit advantage is gonna be behind the fiber switch. So obviously, if somebody is using the acronym ten mags, four mags, hundred mags, and now one gig, that's also gonna be available for future growth. But it's, it's rather down the court as far as on the infrastructure, the equipment that we bring to deliver this proposed service. So, and then in two weeks' time, if we do need to grow this, as applications, we can grow it to fifty mags, a hundred mags, for whatever we need maybe.
How much would it affect the cost if you just do it at one location? Like if you just do that, the community?
Basically, the community center by itself, we're not funding through our internal ROI system to just do the community center whole.
It's nine miles, almost ten miles from our, from this facility. And then to route the fiber optic there, it's a heavy investment. So what we're doing now, we're taking the police and the City Hall, taking those costs and the cost for Civic Center blended. Because on a one-to-one ratio, when investing is now, it's too prohibitive. A five-year, a five-year term alone would not justify the cost.
So that's what you're looking at, is a five-year term?
Correct.
Five-year term, non-appropriation clause in there, parts are available, if you can actually get out of the.
Now, the first proposal we got was a thirty-six month term, would they ever change to five years?
That is correct. We got kind of worked up by the mayor and city manager on the added pricing. So we worked out basically, giving you the free install.
So it saves, I guess, a thousand dollars, right? But then you're committed to a two-year longer term?
Correct. And so you also have the non-appropriation clause, definitely.
And you don't pay installation?
That is correct.
So for us to, so for us to invest in excess of any thousand dollars to build the infrastructure for these three locations, with no installation cost to the city, it's just a monthly recurring, your choices of the internet service, it's with the point points, that would be at your discretion.
Going from a three-year to a five-year, says this, how much in installation?
Well, actually, a thousand fifty.
It's a tricky number, a thousand fifty.
Ten, a thousand. If I'm not mistaken, when I did send you personally, email to you, it was only for two locations, the Police Department.
Now, would this contract be affected by any buyouts that y'all may possibly be in the midst of?
If any happens, the service is gonna be as usual, it's gonna basically be reliable that a deal does go through, it gets approved, it'll be by that company, it's gonna be spaced exactly the same with a non-appropriation clause.
Basically, that's what.
Correct.
Or the person will be.
Correct.
Copy. But whatever.
Mayor, not coming. This is a repeat for George here. George has developed a mustache, so he'll come back and tell me. Welcome back, George.
Thank you.
I wanna say two things about this tonight. I think this is very appropriate for the city moving forward. The city undertaking to subscribe to this, to get a network within part of the community that could lead to later development and reduce prices for commercialization, and even for private installations. I'll make the comment without identifying the carrier. But at our office, crossing Trail Riders, it's weekly that we now have service. And we lost, if you remember, when Mr. Dawson was manager here, we lost the rental on the building next door, the pleasant, that we could not provide them reliable internet service. It was some three years ago. There is an item that, I'm not gonna be fast enough. There is an item that's pending, I don't think it will change these gentlemen's jobs at all. Because Comcast is in the process of buying Time Warner. It's been out in the press, I don't know if that'll change the rates any. Hopefully, they'll be able to cut the rates in half, but I don't think that's the reality. But I would recommend, so because this is not an action item tonight, I would recommend you allow one of the council members, probably a volunteer, to work with your city manager, maybe one of the, one of the council members who feels at least somewhat tech savvy, to work with the manager, to come up with a plan, to that, your next council meeting, or action on the item, or for some response that the town, council can give or perform. Would it be a five-year commitment to the subject of budgeting? The gentleman, and they're careful to say, it would be annually subject to the budgeting. And I would assume that we'd probably calculate this to start with, the budget. We've talked about how that could be worked out, and it could begin as a work before against budget, if there's a clearance, it is reasonable by the. So, but those are some of the details, that is the manager, and particularly the all the citizens in council, we ought to address for that council meeting, or maybe two from down the road. But George has spent a bit of time in the city, learning the city. I think that's, I'm sure he's got a few years' results. And I think they've been very patient in trying to understand the city and understand our needs. And I think we've all now realized the shortcomings we have from the city's own operations. So that's my recommendation. You can take that action to direct the manager, to the city, and the council member, and work with that manager. But I don't think I would do anything more than that.
George, you said something about, if we, you were right, because we were there. You said something about if we, if the council chooses to go with a future, you know, it's not a question right now. You have to wait till, till, till the next year's question. Right? Something that I like hearing, you know. That it's more free. That you said that we could have their service free of charge?
Sales manager, step up!
You said, you're already going free.
Basically, what we'll do is we'll set a time date, say that your budget starts in October. If we get installed, say in August or September, ahead of time, it's around that time before your budget starts, you won't have that service free until we're not starting billing until that time.
So when it is next year, our budget's not even start till the following year, so we can get all that free?
Next year.
Okay, so let me sure, and you're ready for it. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Blue. The next one is item three A, and this is the discussion in reference to public advertising for any job vacancies. Just to clarify.
I have a couple extras, I'll make your audience, Will. You're always a good volunteer.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? No, no, a few too much. I didn't like these other. Let me give just a little background of this down there. It may be in, it may be in the interest of time and my voice for me to simply read this memo and let everybody hear it, so that there's nothing outside the realm of openness here. The question came up about public advertising, adopting vacancies. And this also bears on the issue of the city's human resources policy. And it also bears on the quarterly review of the manager, and your quarterly review of the board relations chart. Okay? All three things come to bear on what I'm about to discuss. And the question was, is there a hiring procedure that specifies that you advertise? And in certain cases, we do have a fairly informal policy that they're be advertising. The reason I say it's informal is I haven't been able to find which copy of the policy manual has been formally approved by the council. So until I find one that's been formally approved by the council, it's a matter of what's been done in practice, as opposed to what's been formally approved by the council that I'm talking about tonight in this memo. Anyway, as a homegrown city in the state of Texas, there are no statutory requirements to follow in the hiring of city personnel, excluding the state and federal requirements to deal with nondiscrimination. Thus, the only documents governing the process for the hiring of the city staff are the charter and any other internal city in the state politics, those are what I just alluded to. Number two, section four, one oh one D one of the charter gives the city manager the sole authority to appoint, and I'm quoting, appoint and when necessary, remove any employee at the city, except as otherwise provided by the charter, unquote. And in so many, so many words, that is the manager's prerogative. And in turn, the quarterly reviews, you hold the manager accountable for the performance of the city staff. And so it's appropriate that the manager have that sole and exclusive authority to make appointments, to discipline, and to review the city reports. That's my editorial comment, not in the memo. Three, section four, one oh three of the charter further reinforces the city manager's role in the hiring of the city secretary by stating, because it's the city secretary that raised the issue, quote, "The city manager shall appoint the city secretary, and such assistant secretaries as the city council shall deem advisable." So in the matter of the city secretary, the council can have certain opinions about what's, quote, deemed advisable about assistants to the city secretary. Four, with very few exceptions, section three, one oh eight of the charter specifically disallows the city council from directing the appointment, and by extension of this exclusion, of any candidate or physician in the city. This power is solely reserved by the city manager, except in cases where the charter specifically dictates that the city manager, the municipal judge, city attorney, and to some extent, the police chief may be the, in this case, it may only approve or disapprove of recommendations determined that must originate from the city manager. So generally speaking, it's the city manager. Number five, the employer handbook and personnel policy contains, section four, one oh four, which reads, and this is the copy that I have accessible to you, quote, "City recruits and selects personnel to fill vacancies by transfers from within the city workforce," parentheses, intra-departmental or interdepartmental, close parentheses, "or public announcements and competitive consideration of applicants for employment." And I'm gonna underscore this. "The city administrator or the city council where the council is the appointed hiring authority for the position," close parentheses, "will determine whether transfers from within the city workforce will be sought as far as making the position available to outside applicants. All vacant positions for which applications may be submitted will be posted for minimum of five days on the bulletin board at City Hall and in other places determined by the city administrator. All city employees may apply for transfers to available openings for which they are qualified. Employees who are undisciplinary or performance commotion in their current positions will not be considered as allowable transfers," end of quote. That's what I note to be available to me in the current employee handbook. Number six, as resulted above, it is solely the state manager who shall set the procedures for the hiring of most personnel, determine if the position is to be posted to the public to apply for it, or if the position is to be promoted from within. Review the candidates and make the final selection after who shall be employed.
Excuse me, Mr. Rosenberg. Are they gonna read everything?
I am. I want the public to know what the issue is.
Okay.
If you don't want. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to be repetitious, but I want everyone to know what the discussion was on the agenda tonight. And if you want me to stop over.
No, I'm just saying, it seems, I mean, if you're repetitious, I mean, I just give the nutshell and you.
Okay, I can go to the nutshell. The nutshell is on the last page, Mr. Hill. In summary, the city council may recommend the figures on how to first work for best candidates. But the city manager is the only official who can make the choice to hire any of the applicants. Their effort, much like any other city employee, should be the sole responsibility of managing the public city, the city secretary. The city council will review any hiring, should be limited to the standard review of how long the manager does in managing the personnel on a lightsight at the quarterly reviews. And my, my point is, at the top of this last page, I took the straightforward shot at saying, the city council has the latitude to require procedures for the selection process. And I don't wanna omit that part of what I'm trying to convey. The point being is, is if the council wants to, this handbook, it's officially adopted handbook, it wants to say, you've gotta look throughout the county, or you've gotta advertise in Washington County News, or you've gotta advertise in T M L, or whatever procedures. You can make that requirement, pardon the handbook, but not understanding that procedure for the pool, it's still the managers to make the selection. That's the short summary of it. And I'm sorry for taking so long to get there, but I wanted to make sure nobody questioned how I got my logic together. Okay? Questions from anybody? The handbook is the book that we need to look at, and that needs to come before the council and the final to be reviewed, and we need to get that thing formally approved by the council. That's another agenda for another day, but when I look at it, I didn't find a signature on the back. That's another agenda for another day, but when I look at it, I didn't find a signature on the back. And I'm concerned that the last one that was formally come before the council was two thousand and two.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go on to three B, consideration and action to appoint members to the Ford Corporation Board. Eric, please.
No, I have just a question to, to Mr. Rosenberg. If, stating that if the current city manager has it in her application or in her contract to once she's, if she's no longer an employer, that she doesn't hold any positions in, in the board or anything like that. And you said that, to your knowledge, there is something to that.
Something to that effect.
Something to that effect. So my question is, is shouldn't it be to something of that effect to Mr. Jostman as well?
There was nothing in his contract that provided.
I, I understand, but just to keep things, you know.
If the council wants to take that as a position, they certainly can do so. But as a matter of state law, that, that's not a conflict. Okay? I understand the fairness issues.
I mean, that's a little.
I think, just to be very specific, the more important issue probably is, is whether the four A has any business to do with the public.
If I may, uh.
I think the.
Whenever I may, sir.
Yeah, let, let Mr. Jostman speak to that. And I believe the issue he certainly needs to concern himself with is whether it be occasioned for a foreign or employed by somebody that's contracted to be, to deal with that entity that you want to. That's probably the direct question.
Whenever allowed to speak, Mary, I will. Okay? After leaving the city and taking employment with Republic, my intent is always to come back and to serve my community in any, if that's impossible. I thought about running for city council, spoke about possibly getting appointed to a vacancy. I checked with my employer, their finding, said if you disclose who you work with, and there's a disclosure notice made in public, then you're okay. Another thing that I wanted to bring up to the council, a big forty, make your decision, and it's your decision, always. You've got your F B C board, and on that board, you've got a bank president. I don't know if he does business with the city or not, but you do have an insurance agent who does do business with the city, correct? They have their insurance, and also, more so than that, he has an insurance company who, the employee that he supervises, is on that insurance plan, correct? Correct? I believe that new employee has the same benefits as a city, any city employee, so that's another issue. I believe that at one of the council meetings, and this is another point, into one of the council meetings, that board came to you and said, "We've got a slate of people that we want on this board, and we ask that you approve that." Didn't have applications, I believe, didn't have any of that stuff, but they made their recommendation. A group of volunteers that wants to serve the city, that's what I am. That's what Melissa Popple is, that's what Sherry Pollak is, and the people that I mentioned on that. So I, out of fairness, I want you to, to know what other decisions the city has made in that respect. I work for Republic Services, we do business with the city, just as, as the light company or the car salesman or the realtor does. When anything comes, you exclude yourself, and you're in compliance with the law, correct, Luke?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
My only recommendation is to completely fill this board, because we cannot function if it doesn't have members. I know you have two applications before you. I believe there may be, I know there's basic requirements for the four A to say that they have to be residents of the city of Paulsville, and I believe this is common residence, is about as far as, check with the attorneys, is that correct? And so I recognize you have two applications before you. I have the recommendation that it's a volunteer, I know there's a lot of hard work.
Do they have to have their license, fair license?
Oh, they will have to go through that process. That is a recommendation by T E A B C. It's not necessarily a city requirement, but because of the way that the four A is, they will have to be part of that license process.
All of them?
The four A board as a whole will have to part of that process. But we have some housekeeping to do, because there's new to appear right now, there are former members on the board.
And his question is, do all the board members have to be on the license, or is it just two?
Two.
At least two, and the two that we have now, actually, there's three.
Because I knew you still have.
There's actually three former board members there. So there's actually three on the license, that's just.
The four members that are there now, who are the ones that are on there?
Right now, it's just Mr. Gleason.
So we're operating, is that a variable, one?
No.
My name remains on there at this time, as far as I know.
I think his question was, who's on the board now that's still in the license, and so that would only be Mr. Gleason.
That is correct.
Well, this is very important to me. You know, we put it on the newspaper, we have citizens here that are trying to better the four A. And I know, like Richard Jostman said, I was against the science of that, I was never against for the people, we're, we have to move forward with it, and we have it now, so. But to me, my, my concern is, with having no, no individuals at all, having one more member, Melissa no longer on there, I mean, it's something that we have to need to take action tonight and, and in the process. I think we gave enough time to the citizens and taxpayers, whoever has, to be able to apply. It was on the newspaper, and I know that it's the whole most in county, I know nobody applied, the two persons. So at this time, we've got to take the legal, what we have, and.
Councilor, I have no opinion on who wants to volunteer for the community. I said you have two applications that were submitted before you, that you skipped right now.
And, and Richard Jostman says you kind of took the lead here. What is it that we can better, try to, your idea maybe, or, or the group or itself, to better, I don't just don't want to just hire them all, you just hire them. What, what is your intent of serving on the four A? And anybody that wants to build a four A, can, can, I want to say a few words, if you want to.
I know that the council had given the previous city manager, myself, a directive to make the center self-standing and profitable within a number of years, and that would be my focus. My focus was to work with Ms. Turner, who is our city manager, and a good one at that, that we would move forward in respect to making that event center more successful. Because I made the mention, the white elephant, people would used to call that. Well, many of those people are utilizing that facility and generating a lot of interest and a lot of activity within that center, and that's our focus, is to continue moving forward with that, with the assistance of the council and working hand in hand with the city manager.
Miss Popple, you did mention that, that the three that, that were, the three members that you said were, have vacated their seats, that they'd be willing to return?
They are interested in coming back if there is a seat vacant for them.
You now have a third application, Miss Pollak just submitted an application, because we have three vacancies, you have to speak right now.
Is it set in a certain number?
Five, five is enough, that's all.
There is five set at this time, but in the past, the board has discussed on several occasions, which unfortunately, never by any farther than the council, to raise the members of the board.
What's Turner on there? What's her current?
Five.
We've got to deal with what's current, the rest.
We can't change that today, if you want.
No. We'll work on what's current and we've got five people we mentioned.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There's one small, small detail that I want to pay your attention to. The four A is in the middle of lawsuit. In the middle of lawsuit, no generalization without a board. The first thing that happens is, is no side files of pleading, you have to disqualify and throw out the lawsuit. So it's very important that at least the forum be on the board. Yes, fortunately, fortunately, the law helps us. And I don't know if this council has formally accepted the resignation of those folks that resigned, but the law in Texas.
Respectfully opposed to resign.
The law in Texas is, is that you continue in the office until your replacement has been sworn in. So I don't want to make too much out of the fact that we need to fill those positions, because it's my view that the present people that have resigned are still there until you formally have accepted their resignations. But I do think it's important, as a matter of housekeeping, we do make appropriate appointments if those people persist and if you accept your resignation. So the resignations are not on the agenda tonight to be accepted, but it's a presumption those resignations are going to be accepted if you don't make the appointments. So you honor the lemon now, you tend the hive and talk so much about making appointments. So I'm assuming the implicit event is that you're accepting the resignations.
Unless you're leaving the board, unless you're really leaving the board.
That's right.
And, and the calendar has been a friendly reference to that, because I said earlier, actually, the normal schedule we leave was on Mother P Day, so we didn't have that meeting. The next one's going to be on the seventeenth, because we aren't operating and having that meeting. And so they have taken that out of compliance, which is why I urge you to appoint and offer to the applications that have been submitted to you. They may call a meeting at any time they can, to the same, if they can do, same to my office members as anyone. You just have to follow the same rules.
If there's no reason to call or arrange a meeting.
There, I'm sorry.
There's no, there's no other reason to call and arrange a meeting for the four A?
I would, I would not necessarily do if it wasn't, it's their choice, but right now, they can't need it all. They do have items that need to be discussed, a calendar for the Boys and Girls Club they need to approve. There are some housekeeping items they need to take care of, but the first thing is that they need to have a pool of members.
Since we haven't received the. But what do you call it?
Application.
Resignations, can they still hold meetings with the board members they want to come back?
I, I would have to decide with you, Attorney, if they did submit officially, that they have resigned to the city secretary.
Do you want me to accept a resignation or not? If they're a representative council, or just, once you got the letter, you're out, or what?
So I don't think we accept a resignation.
I don't think, historically, that you accepted, accepted them as a reference to that. It's not an elected position, it's a appointed position. They did officially resign, we did notify that, and we spoke up in public that there were vacancies. We instructed me to advertise if there were vacancies, and we advertised that there were three vacancies. And so those three members that were being appointed are not, they, they have concluded. And we did notify their attorney in writing and say they're, and notify their employee.
But the proper way of handling this would be to accept the resignation, so.
It, it does imply that you appoint a new member of that, that slide is moved on, or you can appoint a person out, he was the four A board, and even the members that are currently in the city, because you're part of that, looking to appoint.
There's still a law, although there is, it's like when Mr. Menner, he was, he was still a councilman until he, we received a resignation.
That was an elected position, yeah.
I mean, but why are we treating the elected official to the, elected to appoint, what, what the difference? I even kind of want to have a clarification, what is the difference?
It's the same law, you've served in the office, you did, your vacancies were accepted. What the manager's saying is, you treat it as acceptance because you ordered her to go get your appointee.
Luke.
Sir.
The council can appoint whenever, and it doesn't have to receive any resignation.
I know, but there's a constitution that talks about that.
Yeah, but if the item is on the agenda for them to appoint, then they appoint. It doesn't matter who they got.
We can, we can appoint, they got, and appoint with no reason.
Correct.
You're going to appoint them on the assumption that they've resigned.
But we can still take them out with no, with no.
Even no resignation.
It is, it is on the agenda to appoint the board. The board consists of new members, and the board consists of existing members. And I believe Mr. Jostman spoke of at the four A, they made a recommendation. But because we advertise it as vacant, that we can make it to do that. So you have three vacancy positions currently and two city members. Who both expect that they want to continue their service to me when I contacted them.
Who was that?
They both expected Mr. Gleason, said he wants to continue his service, as well as this.
Pollak.
Pollak, yes, sorry. Ms. Pollak, she wants to continue as well.
I just wanted to say that, may I recommend that it is tabled? I know how absolutely crucial it is to have members and for business to go on, but it sounds like it is not clear what the direction is and what by law and what should and shouldn't be done. And perhaps that would give you a little more time to discuss and to do the research and come to a very final definite procedure that needs to be taken. And that way, we, we are clean for the future, and we don't have to backtrack on, on any issues.
Make a point of information. How long is it term, Mr. Gleason, you have been in there quite a bit, three, four years? They're terming it. We have, we have a lot of money to raise by two thousand and sixteen, like about one and a half billion dollars. We need people who can get in there today and work. We cannot table this, we can't postpone it, they have to get in there and start working. Either if we don't have the money, we're going to have to restructure, and that's the truth. So I recommend that we move forward today. Tabling does no one any good, it just prolongs the issue. Thank you. And by the way, you have five good names here, so I'll look at these names in sincerity.
We do have a small window of opportunity, the twenty seventh, we have another council meeting, which is before the next ever meeting, which is sometime early March. We can decide what to do there going forward, and legally, the attorney can prepare, accept it, so we can make sure that we don't misstep and accept it, design to see how it comes.
Would it be a recommendation to reinstate the members that are currently, that have resigned, but not officially resigned, but possibility?
That would, that would not be my recommendation. My recommendation would be to table it so that we can make sure that we want to give everybody an opportunity to be reconsidered, they want to be reconsidered, submit the application. For those that may have wanted to submit the application, again, if you're going to extend it, that might be extended, but the last, the last time you're going to have to do that is the twenty seventh, because you have to have a board.
Mr. Rosenberg, are we putting too much emphasis on the whole resignation and legally? There's nothing really, as far as legally binding. I mean, I think when you come up here and you name your, your appointments, whether they've been on the board two years ago, two months ago, three years ago, it, it, it's really irrelevant. As long as you've got willing people who are willing to serve on these boards, I think that's ultimately the goal of the four A and the city board.
And you have to, you have to do applications before you, for you to sign the office of retirement.
Especially when you have people that are not off the board and are willing to go forward.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, then you might change them on.
Don't give them a chance to change them on.
Yes, I'm saying.
You, but I have to agree with you, Attorney, it is very important for us to get this board up to running and under, and the seventy-two hour leaders can do that. They can do whatever they need to, as long as they do it properly, with the proper levels.
There, I'd like to make a motion in reference to Mr. Gleason, he served a long time on this board. I have personally talked to Mr. Gleason, and just for his efforts that he's placed on it, I'd like to, Mr. Gleason, to remain on the four A board at this time, so he'd be one of my appointments. My other appointments are Deb Conley, Leanne Rose, Melissa Popple, and Andy Jostman.
You have a motion, second? You have a motion by Councilman Nedra, and second by Councilman Roden, Bobby Baker.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three, two. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you members, making some better.
Thank you.
Then now we're going to watch two.
I said Bill Gleason, Deb Conley, Leanne Rose, Melissa Popple, and Andy Jostman.
Thank you.
And I'll do respect for Ms. Pollak, I, I know you submitted your application. I'd just like some time to talk to Mr. Chris Gleason before just removing him, especially with him not being here and him being on the board for such a long time.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. I just want you guys to know that I am very willing to help. I will be, you know, anything that Mr. Jostman and Melissa and the rest of the board ask me to come and help with. As before, anything out of the center, I've been very involved in, I want to continue doing that, whether I'm on the board or not. I definitely will be a volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
And I feel the same way because of. And I feel the same way, because Mr. Gleason's on the beer license, and I don't want to jeopardize what's going on by, by removing him at the same time.
No, my feelings, I'm still here.
We'll be the best.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item three C, consideration in action to operate the mayor, the city manager, or city secretary to sign checks drawn under Wells Fargo Bank account.
This, this item is a housekeeping item for sure. As, as you know, our secretary has a lot, so we need to have names of who can sign checks. Currently, it is the mayor, the city secretary that signed the check. I'm recommending that you have three people who can sign checks, and you must have two of the three, and a check of balance, in case one is unavailable. We also did some research and found that there are still some older accounts that have the old seat, and we need to do some housekeeping, which is in reference to that. Wells Fargo said that they would, they need to have a depression, so that we can have something currently as to how to do this. We've also checked our credit cards, because they have names of former employees on it as well, that we need to be issued, and then you, your board, who do you like to have, is just even just for different accounts.
I want to clarify something here. I think, and I'm not really sure, Andy, maybe you can refresh your memory here. Has the city secretary ever signed checks prior to recent, do you know?
I don't.
See, because I believe the reason that the city secretary went on there, because we can have an interim, and then we're waiting for your ninety days to get back on there to put the city manager on there, it just never, like you said.
It is a housekeeping issue, but if it was just a mayor and a city manager, I still recommend that you have a third party, because people can see people are telling, and you can have two of the three, you would need to have two of the three signatures.
But in emergency, I think, you can still send a check out with one signature, is that correct, or?
Yes.
To me, the, the best people sign checks better, and I know three is quite a bit.
My concern is that the city secretary is under you, and I, I know when the mayor has a check come across her.